Let's be mindful of the parking plan. Again, we've had teams of people, law enforcement, everybody helping us with that parking plan because we just want it to be as smooth as possible. And hey, everybody knows that graduation ticket, it's the hottest ticket in town because everybody wants to be part of that day and support our seniors. It's just, it's just a great, great place to be. Just a great place to be, and I'm so excited to be right here with you in Halifax County. And that's, that's all I have for now. Hang on, guys, we're almost there. We're almost there. We can all see the finish line, so, thanks.
Thank you. Dr. Huskin, well, the good news, it's a lot of good things going on, a lot of good things happening. Is there an issue with YouTube? I think we're getting a couple messages that maybe that's not working. Sorry. You working on it? You think it's fixed? Okay. All right. We'll keep you posted. But yeah, it is a lot of good stuff going on, are fastly approaching the end of the year. Couple really, really neat events that I was fortunate enough to attend. My short time on the board, I've attended a lot of pretty fun and neat, neat functions, but I tell you, two in the last couple of weeks are gonna be tough to top. On May 3rd, Vice Chair Lloyd and I were fortunate enough to attend the special needs prom. That was a really, really special event. The, the event kicked off with a nice lunch. Kids sat down, they're very polite. We all enjoyed lunch with them, but you know, they were nice, but their heart wasn't into lunch. They were, they were, they were ready for the main event. And the main event kicked off a millisecond after the DJ started playing the music, and every kid out there hit the dance floor, and it was, it was a great time. It, I don't know, it did just so good, is what I can say. It was, it was a fun, fun time. Special thanks to everybody that had a hand in putting that together. The second event Dr. Huskin just mentioned was our Halifax County Staff Appreciation Dinner that was held on the night. Mr. Potts and I were in attendance there. That night was, was spent honoring employees with 20, 30, 40, and 50 years, if you can believe it, of service. It was, it was a really, really special evening. Cassandra Williams, Parole Pro at Cluster Springs, received the Excellence in Service Award and a Teacher of the Year Award this year, went to Miss Lori Cole at the Pace Academy. Sadly, we did honor those who are retiring at the end of the year. Those folks were not hard to spot, they were the ones with the biggest smiles, and they ran up and got their plaque, and, but it was, it was, it was really an enjoyable night, had a great time spending time with those that have dedicated so much time to this county and to our kids. To the teachers and students, we are almost there, fastly approaching the end of the year. In that same teacher appreciation or staff appreciation dinner, I made the mistake of incorrectly stating the number of days left. I was on the high end. They almost threw me out, so I'm not gonna say how many days, but I know we're getting close. I know we're getting close. But to everybody, thank you all for a tremendous year, teachers, students, administration, y'all are, y'all have earned a well-deserved break. And to the class of 2024, good luck to you all, wherever you may go, whether you enter the workforce or headed off to college, I know you're gonna accomplish great things, and I can't wait to see what you do. Thank you for that. Vice Chair Lloyd, any words of wisdom?
No comments.
No comments. Our student representative, Ms. Murray.
She's on soccer field tonight.
Hopefully she is winning a soccer game tonight, and I will try to fill her shoes. Good evening, Chair Mason, Vice Chair Lloyd, Dr. Huskin, and the rest of the school board. The students of Halifax County High School have had an eventful four weeks since I last spoke to you. The students are working hard to round out the final few weeks of the school year. On April 9th, the Area 15 Special Olympics Track and Field Competition was held at Tuck Dillard Stadium. Special education students were able to participate in track and field events, softball throws, and games such as cornhole and soccer. All of the participants had a fantastic time. From April 12th to April 14th, the FCC LA Club participated in a weekend leadership training conference in Virginia Beach, where we were able to practice job-related skills and leadership skills. Through competing in the culinary arts exhibit, our FCC LA students won $25,000 in scholarships. Congratulations to Isabella Russo, Sean Forlines, and Michael Sandoff for placing in the competition. On April 18th, Halifax County High School held a career expo and transition fair where students engaged in meaningful conversations regarding their futures. Special thanks to all the businesses that came out to talk to the students. On April 25th, Student Representative Preston Riddle had the opportunity to present to First Lady Suzanne Yunkin, Governor's Secretary, and the State Board of Education as a member of Virginia Students Advisory Board. Throughout the school year, teacher cadets from the high school have been able to gain valuable experience by working with students at the Early Learning Center. On April 29th, our annual senior and junior prom was held, and the students had a blast. A special shout-out to the Student Council Association and Mrs. Tyree Lee for organizing the prom. On May 9th, the annual staff appreciation event was held, and many teachers and faculty were recognized for their hard work and dedication. I would like to give a special thank you to all the staff that contributed to the education system in Halifax County. We succeed because of you. Also, happy belated Teacher Appreciation Week to all the educators in Halifax County. As sports teams are finishing up their seasons, and some of them are participating in district tournaments this week. Our softball team has a winning record of 16 and 4. They are tied full first in the district. The baseball team also has a winning record at 15, at 16 and 5. The girls and boys soccer teams have winning records, and they compete at Smith River today and Friday for the district championships. The girls, boys, uh, girls and boys track teams have been doing well this spring season, and several of them are headed to the regional tournament. Our boys tennis team fell just short in the district tournament. However, Senior Preston Riddle is continuing on to the regional tournament. Our girls tennis team is working hard to beat their rival in the district, Bassett High School. I'd like to take the opportunity to thank you all for hearing me out and listening to my reports throughout the school year. The kindness and acknowledgement I received have truly made me feel like a member of the school community. Thank you all for this opportunity. The students at Halifax County High School have had a great year. Thank you. And I know she's working hard right now, hopefully scoring a goal, but thank you Peyton for the job that she did as our student representative.
Absolutely. We, we just absolutely are so proud of Peyton. I couldn't be prouder of her. She's heading on to my alma mater, Virginia Tech, so go Comets tonight and go Hokies for Peyton in the fall.
Hmm. Um, starting, I think, at the last meeting, you know, I mentioned that we are constantly in and out of different committee meetings, and we started giving updates on those committees. So, Code of Conduct Committee, Ms. Otwell, are you doing that one? Thank you.
Yeah, so we met again this month for Code of Conduct. We actually have a draft ready for the board to review tonight. Mr. Lewis will take us through that. We can see if we have any questions, and hopefully we should have a final draft ready for our meeting next month.
All right. And Wielders Committee, Ms. Comer, I said, you all met, but you didn't have a lot of updates there?
Uh, Ms. President Don is working on some very cool, interesting things I think will be brought to us as a board later in the fall.
Okay.
So, nothing to report as of yet.
Okay.
We'll see kind of where we go from there in the fall.
Okay, all right, perfect, thank you. And the Superintendent Parent Advisory Committee, that's me, we met April 18th. Attendance was a little light, but it was a pretty night, and I'm sure there was a lot of baseball games taking place that night. Dr. Huskin gave the group an update on the capital improvement, updates and plan, also gave a budget update. We also took the time to review a policy that I think it was time for that to be reviewed as well, the District Parental Involvement Policy. And the highlight of the evening, and I think that the parents there enjoyed the most, is we took a virtual tour of the new high school, which was, which was really neat. I had the opportunity to do that, but that was really, really neat, so. And the Facilities Committee, Mr. Lloyd?
Yes, sir. The Facilities Committee continues to meet monthly. At the most recent meeting, we received an update from Mr. Mareska and from Grimmon Parker as we continue to look at the high school project as a whole and to continue to study the feasibility of the athletic complex. So we've continued to look at that, and I expect a report on the athletic committee from, I'm sorry, on the athletic complex probably in the next 30 to 60 days. Shortly after the meeting, within a few days, members of the committee took a tour of the high school site, thanks to Mr. Mareska, and it was very exciting to actually go in and see, see all the work that's been done. You know, I often stop at that stoplight and try to peek over and see what's been done, but it's completely different when you have the opportunity to walk the site and to see it. It's, it's very exciting when you have that opportunity. If you, fellow members of the board have the opportunity to take that tour, I would definitely encourage you to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Lloyd. Facilities Committee, Ms. Runyon, can you give us an update there?
Sure. We met on May 9th, and Dr. Buckloo gave us an update. The budgeted revenue received was 68.3%. The budgeted expenses are at 69.38%, so everything is well on track there. She did give us an update that we have chosen to go ahead and update our school phone systems, which of course, right now, a lot of them are broken. We stayed local with GCR, and then we upgraded the system, which has three times more storage, it has the cloud on it, and you know, $1,700 versus $2,400, that's a win in my book. She did update us and let us know that the LED lighting at Sanya Elementary School has been done. Meadville is on the books to be done the first week the students are out for the summer. We do have bids out for the HVAC systems for Meadville and Sanya, but also those are already being paid through Esra Funds. That's not coming out of the, the regular budget. Let's see, I think they are expected to have bids back for the roof repair for Sidney Jennings on May, or on or around May 28th, and of course, that's coming out of the construction grant. And I believe everything else that we went over, I think, is things that's gonna be brought to the board, but they are very good things.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that update. Thanks so much. And the Homework Committee, Ms. Hicks?
Yeah, the Homework Committee met twice with Mrs. Miller and Ray Keith, and we, we've made progress. We'll have a plan to the board next month. We've had some student representatives on the, on the committee, and that's been very helpful. We've been learning that it's not just the quality of homework, but the quantity to make it meaningful and effective and to create teaching opportunities. Along with that is teacher training. So those are some things we've talked about right now. Elementary has homework that's not graded, and secondary has homework that is graded, so some of that has been discussed as well. So in June, we'll have something for the board to look at.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much for that. And next week, get to honor a couple or a few of our outstanding businesses in the community.
All right. Join me?
Yes, ma'am. You'd like to.
So every year, the Virginia School Board Association gives us the opportunity to recognize businesses that are supportive of our schools and our community. And like I mentioned earlier, where would we be without our businesses that just pour into our schools and our students and, and just continue to wrap around us? So tonight, we are going to recognize three of our local businesses and just publicly, again, just say thank you. And we have representatives, we know from two of them that are here with us, so we have just a little, just a little small thank you, just to say, we just couldn't do it without you. So first, we'd like to recognize Charles Anderson Lawn Care. So. And these plaques are actually made by the students at the Career Tech Academy and product. So, come on up. I feel like I've seen you every day this week. I'll crowd a man over this way.
I know.
Thank you all. Appreciate everything you do. Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am. Hey, buddy. Thank you.
Charles, let Bruce hold the certificate. One of y'all, there you go. This is about the elder. Thank you all. Next, we'd like to recognize Berry Hill Resort and Conference Center.
We have us down by the lab. Thank you so much.
Thank you. You're all busy too. Last business, we're not sure that they are able to join us tonight, but it's, is it?
Kajaya.
Kajaya Enterprises.
Kevin Hodges, I think his son had a soccer game somewhere. I talked to him this morning, but.
He's busy being a dad tonight.
Yep, yep.
Again, we appreciate them and all the, all the support. Thank you. We'll just, we'll keep going. Ms. President, if you want to join me for our next recognition?
So, good evening, Dr. Huskin, Mr. Mason, and other board members. I am pleased to recognize one of our school nurses this evening. I'd like to introduce you to Carrie Spencer. So while Carrie's walking up, I want to tell you a little bit about her. Carrie is a registered nurse. She holds a bachelor's degree in nursing and public health. Carrie is the school nurse for Scottsburg Elementary School and has held that position for the last five years. Before that, she taught the CNA class and medical terminology classes at the high school. Before joining our school system, Carrie honed her nursing skills and expertise at Centerra in the employee health and infection control, and prior to that, in the ICU. So y'all know ICU, you gotta be pretty much on your game, so it makes her a very good school nurse. She can handle anything. Her professional journey is enriched by her personal life, as she and her husband have three children, a sixth grader, a third grader, and a preschooler, a soon-to-be kindergartner. So Carrie's recent recognitions are a testament to her exceptional service. She was most recently honored in the, with the Excellence for Service Award at First Scottsburg Elementary, a well-deserved recognition. Additionally, she has now completed the rigorous requirements to earn her national certification for nursing, a significant achievement in her career. So that is why we are recognizing her tonight, because it is a big deal. Congratulations, Carrie.
I know you're gonna get an official certificate, but we need a placeholder. And so Tina, and is Ms. Cowan here? So Ms. Cowan, you come up too?
I know everybody has to be here. Come on. I know, I know. She's got a big support system. She brought a whole Scottsburg crew with her.
I've got a gift for her, and we're gonna make a big hoo-ha about her tomorrow. I have to be at the high school tomorrow, so.
Perfect, perfect.
Super proud of her.
Yeah, she did a, did a great job, did a great job. Mr. Mareska, got an update for us on your project, sir?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, Dr. Huskin, members of the board, it's a pleasure to be back with you all here this evening. We started this project, broke ground almost about a year ago to the day, and we're halfway through, and a year from now, we're gonna be doing a ribbon-cutting ceremony. So we are on track to do that. Schedule's good, but we have a lot going on, so let me go ahead and dive right into this. Construction progress, we are finishing up the footers, the stem walls, and the underground plumbing and electrical. Almost all of the load-bearing walls have already been erected. Steel erection has made significant progress, as you've probably all seen. The steel decking is already complete in the northern classroom wing, that's the A wing, and all the steel is erected, the column steel and beams are already erected in the southern classroom wing. We've poured slab on grade this month. We've continued doing, we've done all the locker rooms, we've done the fitness center, and we've also done the first floor of that area A of the classroom, that north wing of classrooms. And the slab on deck's already been poured in the, in the second story of the main gym, that running track around the top of it, that's already poured also. We're continuing with the, installing the underground and the cosmetology, that new addition that we wanted to add, that CTE addition we wanted to add. The kitchen underground is being inspected right now and verified by the equipment supplier and the kitchen designer, those just, there's a lot of penetration, so we have checks and balances with the engineers, the designers, and the kitchen's equipment supplier to make sure everything's where it needs to be. The pond is complete, thank goodness, because we got four and a half inches of rain last night, and the pond did hold it all. Hopefully, hopefully the people living in the adjacent neighborhoods are feeling the, some relief with that giant pond in, in there now. We're still working on the permanent bus road, the base course of asphalt will be, asphalt will be putting down this summer. The HVAC contractor, that would be, they're starting hanging the ductwork already and the hydronic piping, that's your chill water, cold water, that's everything that gets your building cool and gives you hot water. That's Comfort Systems, they're on, they're on it, they're doing a great job for us. The electrical rough-in, that's Ace Electric, another local company, they're also, they're doing the rough-in, and they're already pulling wires throughout the building. Continuing on, started brick installation already. We've got the first few courses of base, or first few lower courses of brick already installed around the, mostly the perimeter of the building. The rooftop air handling units, the RTUs, they have already started to arrive. We have a few of them on site already, and the chillers are still expected to arrive early, they're starting, expected to arrive next month. We held a meeting this past month with the school staff to review the administration furniture options. We're also meeting soon with the same staff to discuss some general classroom furniture options. We met recently, we issued, we did put an RFP on the street for the greenhouses that we need. We've met with the, we had a mandatory pre-bid meeting. Unfortunately, we didn't have anybody show up to it. We're gonna go ahead and put that back out on the street one more time, make some more phone calls, and drum up some more interest for it. I think we have a couple of contractors lined up, we just need to make them aware of it. We're also gonna issue an RFP for cafeteria furniture, so we can get some local support for the project and get some local bidding on the project. So that's coming out, both of those are coming out here in the next week, week and a half. And finally, the architect is refining the athletic facilities concept, as Mr. Lloyd said. We did meet with them, gave, went through a good, better, best option, and based on their recommendations, Grimmon Parker is developing that more precisely. They're gonna present to you next month with a, some good renderings and a more dug, a more dug-in cost estimate, a little more broken down than what they had presented to the Facilities Committee. On a purchase update, year-to-date savings, we still, 1.1 million, a little bit over that. At year-to-date, we've saved 318,432, just year-to-date. Upcoming purchase orders, we're looking at doing, we need flooring. We have resilient athletic flooring, we have athletic wood flooring, we have auditorium wood flooring, and we have the luxury vinyl tile flooring, which is your main flooring in the building. We also have the storefront glazing, casework, auditorium seating, and the bleachers. So as you can see, what we're doing now is attacking the finishes of the building itself, everything that goes in the building. Now we're trying to attack that and buy those out right now. A bunch of pictures. This is the, what I mentioned, the brick installation, you can see what they've done. They've gotten the first piece of hard insulation back behind there, and they bring the brick up to it, and they'll continue all the way up like that. And this is Ace Electric doing their best. There's underground electrical piping in the main electrical room, as you can see, there is a lot of underground electrical. And Ace Electric's very good, they actually prefabricate all these pipe racks in their facilities, bring them to the job site, dig a hole, put it in, compact it, and it makes installation much easier and much faster, and everything's running very smoothly with them as well. And here's a picture of Comfort Systems. Don't mind that little yellow wire, that's temporary lighting, you'll see that, and those go away when we're, start actually burning real lights in there. But this is just an example of the ductwork that they've been putting in. You can see they've got penetrations in the wall there for other ductwork to come through. They're moving on it. This is the hydronic piping, those, those are your main piping lines. I believe that's the chill water supply and chill water return. You may not be able to see it, but there's hot water supply, hot water return on the right side, a little run-up parallel with that. Those get fed and branched off into all your VAVs, all your other cooling accessories in the building. And here's a look of your auditorium from the stage right now. You can see that, we looked at it, it seats about 750 people in there. So it's, it's a good size. It'll, it may not, it looks big now, but it'll look bigger once everything's in there, I promise you. And here's us pouring a slab on deck in the, pouring the main gym. Those guys on the second, all the way on the far side are actually putting the concrete in place. You can see how big your gym is. We're able to get an entire concrete pump truck in the, in the, in the middle of it, as well as all of our concrete trucks, with plenty of room to spare. And here's the steel decking. This is looking on top of the second floor of the gym, looking east to west, and that window right there, you see, that goes to your main gym. This is actually your, the north side of the gym where your Health and Wellness Center is gonna be, as long as there's, we are going to use those, well, the idea is to use those for actually team changing rooms also, if you have a bunch of events going on up there. And here's your player development cage area. This is actually looking north to south. Mr. Lloyd, when we were out there, you asked me how wide it was, it is 74 feet by 19 feet, which should be plenty for us to hit some baseballs in there. And here's us preparing to pour the main gym slab, that was earlier this week. As you can see, they have the vapor barrier in there, and you can see it is holding the water, it's doing its part for right now, but the guys will get into it, we have leaf blowers and stuff, we get the water off that before we put the steel in and put the concrete down, but it's doing its job. Here's a look at the steel in the classroom wing B, this is the southern classroom, you see, it's all put together, they have the decking on the first deck, all down, they're starting on the second deck, but all the main steel is already up and bolted in and inspected. And here's your CMU block on your northern classroom, wing A, you can see they've got that, that inner wall almost all the way to the top, they'll be done with that this week. And the last picture is, this is your fitness room, 3,276 square feet of fitness area space. And those, those windows there, there's a lot of windows there, the way that the view from it is gonna actually be towards your future athletics fields and stadium. So when athletes are working out in there, they'll be able to see where they're gonna go play at and present their skills. And that's the presentation I have for you all tonight.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Mareska before we let him go? Thank you for the update.
Thank you as well. Appreciate it.
Let's see, give our driven towards excellence report, Mr. Davis, Halifax County High School?
Good evening, Chairman Mason, Vice Chair Lloyd, Dr. Huskin, and other board members. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to discuss how the high school has been driven towards excellence. First, I would like my amazing faculty and staff, the ones that are here, you know, we got a lot of things going on at the high school, so the ones that are here would ask you to stand to be recognized. When I was introduced to the staff as principal, I informed them of my expectations of having dedicated staff members who are willing to sow seeds of knowledge to every student. As everyone should know, seeds grow at different times, but it's our responsibility as educators is to keep sowing. And the high school's. And the high school's teachers continue to do just that. With that being said, I would like to present each of you with a plant that started as a seed from our greenhouse class that the students nurtured and helped grow. I did some walkthroughs in the greenhouse, and I could see how passionate those students were to those plants. I believe that as adults, and I'm talking educators and families, we should have the same passion that I sow in those children with our children that we have each and every day. So I challenge every one of you all, nurture these plants and send pictures to us, okay?
Make sure, yes, sir.
Send pictures to us, because I know our greenhouse down there, they're particular about these plants now, I'm just telling you. So please, send us some pictures so we can actually have that. So they, they have a little, Chairman Mason, I'm, I'm curious to see what yours is going to look like.
No comment. Yes, sir. I'll do my best.
Okay. For our school report card, we started this school year out at a level three in the chronic asymptiaism category and needed to increase our test and participation rate. Chronic asymptiaism is still an issue for us, but we are offering our students opportunities to recover missed days. Many telephone and face-to-face conferences with families have been conducted to provide assistance and to create attendance plans. We offer four Saturdays during April and May for our students to attend Saturday school from nine to 12 to receive remediation and attendance recovery credits for chronic asymptiaism. Next year's, our plan is to start early, so we can actually reach these students before it gets too, too far gone. Concerning our participation rate, with the assistance of Dr. Husken and Ms. Miller and other central office staff members, a plan was devised to improve the test and participation rate. And we feel pretty confident from our, from the rates that we've seen so far. So we, that, that has made a tremendous help with that participation rate. We also offer our students after-school remediation, tutoring session. We call it Comet Cafe. We stand on our slogan, "When Comets Take, Where Comets Take Flight." Some of our students will attend a university, community college, enlist in military, and while others enter straight into our workforce. Hopefully, the knowledge our students have gained at the high school will allow them to take flight in whatever direction they choose. The high school is a comprehensive school that offers our students many opportunities. Our students can graduate with a high school diploma, various certifications, and students can also earn an associate's degree at the same time. The class of 2024 consists of over 300 students, and 46 are candidates to receive an associate's degree this year. We offer many students many opportunities. We have a dual enrollment opportunities. We, we are partnership with Southside Virginia Community College and Danville Community College. The high schools has, we have, on our site, we have 16 teachers who taught 29 dual enrollment courses at the high school. The higher ed center had five teachers who taught 11 different dual enrollment classes for us. We also have a scholarship opportunities for our students. Thanks to the different organizations, our students have the opportunity to earn scholarships every year. This year's scholarships award will be May the 22nd. And we're very thankful for all the organizations that will be actually awarding our students these scholarships opportunities. Last year, just, just to give you a hint, last year, we had 71 organizations award scholarships to our students. Approximately 131 students received scholarships and financial aid. Approximately $1 million were awarded to our students in scholarships and financial aid. So that was huge. So we're looking for good things coming May the 22nd. We offer our students externships and co-op opportunities. 13 of our students participated in work-based learning opportunities through the Career and Tech Academy. And I, along with Dr. Husken, we, we were there as that award ceremony went on this morning. So I was very pleased at that program, so. 35 students participated in marketing corp. The high school was also, we kind of partnered with Ace Electric, which Vince was talking about on, on the site. We partnership with them. 13 students were interviewed, and seven of the students received jobs, and they will be actually working on our new school site because of this partnership that we had with Ace Electric. So we're pretty excited about that. And also, the high school also sponsored another Career Expo Transition Fair, which was a huge success. Over 44 business partners participated in this. 11th and 12th graders, they came in and they walked around, and they had conversations with these different businesses and our partners. We also have a transition program opportunities for our students. We're very intentional about assisting every student with opportunities, not only while they're in high school, but also when they leave us. And we have a strong partnership with DARS, Department of Agent and Rehabilitation Service, and HOGRADE. They actually partnership with us to give our students jobs. And in fact, this summer, we will have our first Career College Readiness Camp, thanks to the partnership of DARS and Blooming Consulting. So we're, we're pretty excited about the things that, that, that we're, we're doing with our transition program at the high school. Also, just a little bit about some of the things that we do, our students do for our community. And I, I call this community outreach. We, this program has allowed our students to really go out and volunteer many hours throughout the school year in the community. FBLA, Future Business Leaders of America, they assist with feet more at South Boston Elementary. They organize a canned food drive at the high school. They made blankets and sent them to the Project Axe Foundation, and they sponsored several fundraising activities within the community also. And our JRTC program, the high school is a, has a very active JRTC program. Cadets have volunteered in the community many, many hours. It was, it was, when I asked First Sergeant to give me a list of the things, I was amazed at the activities that those cadets actually participate. And a lot of it is like on the weekends, and, and they actually go out to the community. One of the main things they do, and they have helped us tremendously, they assist us at the prom. And we actually included them in our graduation planning meeting the other day, because they are very instrumental as far as the success of our parking. So they do a lot for this community and the high school. Also, our FCCLA, they have donated cooking and sustainability books to all of the seven elementary schools. They have adopted highway road cleanup. And they also won a community service award for working with Halifax County Animal Control. Our marketing program, this, this marketing program that we had was involved in a real-world marketing project that produced impressive results. Marketing students from high, from Halifax and two neighboring school divisions, Mecklenburg and Brunswick County, were invited to create marketing materials for Southside Behavioral Health. And what they had to do was actually send a message and, and promote about vaping. And, and that was really good that they actually did that, because you know, of course, that is still a big issue for us here. So we're very pleased that we had students to actually go out and try to market that too. Our personal development students, the, the things that they do, they help in the People's Pantry at least twice a month. They help with the Salvation Armory, and they also help with our Halifax County Animal Control. A little bit more about our, our school and the marching band. Our marching band continues to provide our community with great performances. They even go out to a lot of our elementary schools to help celebrate too. So very, we're always excited when we get an invitation to the elementary schools, because those students actually love going out and supporting the students at the different elementary schools. Our SCA, I think as Dr. Husken stated, the prom was just amazing. And that group actually sponsored, and they took care of the whole thing with that. They sponsor pep rallies. They also did, at the beginning of the year, they did a cupid ball. They sponsored a talent show just the other week. So that, they, they're doing amazing work for us at the high school and the students there. We also have at our school, we're, we started back with our YOVO soap, use of Virginia speaking out about safety, traffic safety, which we had that program up and running prior to COVID. So when COVID came, it kind of slacked off. But this year, they met, and we actually got an organization started again at the high school. And I'm going to tell you, they hit the ground rolling with this. They put out many videos. They hung posters all around the school. They went out and did seatbelt checks in the parking lot for the students to come in. They had a little competition with that. They took pictures in the parking lot of students being buckled up. So they were sending a clear message about traffic safety. So we're pretty, pretty pleased with that. And also, can't say enough about this program, because this program actually do a lot with the communication piece at the high school. This program is called the Graphic Digital Visualization Class. And this class not only creates all the content for Comet News, but also they provide public service announcements. They create the yearbook. The students have created over 35 Comet News episodes promoting student life at the high school, plus many announcements that they do at different athletic and special events with the videos. In, in fact, they even done the know before you go and, and how to end of the security system, which we did prior to the school opening. We wanted to send out a message that, and this group actually took, took that. So we're pretty pleased with that, and Ms. Kelly Weatherford for all the work that she's done with that group. And, and they do a diverse, I mean, it, it is something to see those students, because they're all in the school and they're communicating. Hopefully, all of you have seen some of the, the captures of the Comet News. If you haven't, please find out a way to get that, because they're doing amazing work with that. This group tried to capture all the special moments of 2023, 2024 school year. So that's their goal. So they're doing that. They're constantly in the halls. And I will end with a video that these students actually produce. The last thing, our athletic program. And I want to thank every business and community member who have assisted the high school's athletic program with fundraisers, sponsorship, and donations. It truly takes a community to support to have a successful athletic program. I was super excited to share that today we have 12. In fact, we had another one today that signed. Yeah, so we have close to 13 seniors that have already signed letters of intent to play at the next level. So we're, we're pretty excited about that. Just a little bit, we have a lot of like district tournaments going on. We have softball that's at the school now. I think they play at 7:30, so pretty excited about that. Our softball team have already advanced to the region 4D tournament, so they'll definitely be playing in that. Our girls' tennis is having another great year and have qualified for the regional tournament. One of our boys on the, boys' tennis player had an amazing year and has qualified to compete in the regional tournament. Our girls' track team won the district championship. Our boys' and girls' basketball team this summer have planned to go to Liberty University for basketball summer camps. And can't say enough about the things that our football staff has done. The football team continues to host individual clinics for free. These clinics are run by former high school and college players from all, all around our community who, who's willing to give back. And so, again, those are just things that we're offering our students at the high school, and it, it's been a blessing to me to be a part of it. I have a great admin staff. I want, I want you two to stand, please, because these two are my right and left hand right here. And I thank them for all they do. Now we'll watch the video.
Halifax County High School, we are committed to creating a diversified atmosphere with many different opportunities for students to pursue their future career paths. The top priority of our school is to create a positive learning environment where students are taught cognitive, social, and emotional skills, as well as communication, critical thinking, and application techniques.
Extracurricular activities are a pillar for our school's success. Our sports and clubs help students by promoting social and emotional growth and allowing them to express themselves freely. Our students learn how to cooperate and up with others by giving and receiving constructive feedback. Extracurricular activities provide a channel for reinforcing lessons learned in the classroom, ultimately allowing students to excel physically and academically.
We strive at Halifax County High School to incorporate hands-on activities, extended classroom learning, and implementing concept development. It is vital for the students to take ownership of their learning and develop a sense of independence while growing in their academic endeavors.
Creating pathways for the students to invest in the development of academic progress while focusing on the class framework is vital here at Halifax County High School. The dedicated instructional staff is always incorporating new and innovative techniques to help the students gain a real-world experience. Building relationships that foster respect, learning, and achievement help guide the students in their future pathways. Halifax County High School encourages the community to invest in our youth and our future.
Connecting our community, family, and educators together will provide the best platform for our youth to advance and thrive in Halifax County. Student success is our number-one goal here at Halifax County High School. Once a comet, always a comet.
Thank you all for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Great report. Thank you so much. Mr. Davis, Assistant Superintendent with a policy update.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair, Dr. Husken, School Board members. As you recall, at the April Board meeting, there were several policy updates that were tabled for tonight's discussion. Those have been looked at and adjusted, and they are presented before you this evening. I would ask that you approve these so that we can update our policy manual.
Thank you, Mr. Davis, for, for the updates. Can we take a look at KLB, Public Complaints About Learning Resources? It looks like everything else has, has been done, so thank you for all of those updates. This is the only one I think that we might need to have a discussion on. So the draft from VSBA gives us, oh, that was it.
Yeah, that's it right there.
So the draft from VSBA gives us two options. There's option one and option two. Are you recommending that we take the highlighted one as option two, or?
So the, as far as the previous update for the strike through, VSBA had those separated as one sheet for option one, one sheet for option two. So what they're recommending was, instead of just having two separate, combine both onto KLB together, and that way you could use either one. Option would be acceptable.
So what we've done with all of the other policies, when there's two options, is we choose one of the options, and that's what we adopt as policy, because there are two different options for how to handle complaints about learning resources. So having both in here doesn't say what we as Halifax County School Board is, is how we're going to handle these complaints. So I think as a board, we need to choose either option one or option two, and only have one, because that will be our policy and how we implement questions and concerns.
I mean, that's the will of the board. I'm just sharing what the updates from VSBA.
I think the difference between, the first one has a committee, and the second one, you bring the complaint more to the principal and superintendent, and I'm okay with option two, the highlighted one.
I'm fine with that as well. So I would move that we approve the changes to the policies presented, including KLB using option two, and move that we approve that.
Okay, so any other discussion on that? Okay, all right. So just so I'm clear, we're going to approve all the other policies, and we're going to adopt option two. Okay, got you. Okay. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say no. Okay.
All right, thanks, sir.
Thank you. Supplemental insurance update. Dr. Buckloo, Mr. Rosenthal.
Good evening, Board, Chair, members of the Board, and Dr. Huskin. I'm presenting Mr. Rosenthal tonight to discuss the process that we went through to get to where we are tonight for our supplemental insurance review of our RFP that we posted. So, Mr. Rosenthal, I turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman Mason, Vice Chairman Boyd, Dr. Huskin, Mr. Davis, and Dr. Buckloo. It's nice being here again, seeing this nice school board and getting your update on what occurred with your voluntary or supplemental insurance programs. The Halifax County Public Schools Administrator decided to test the insurance marketplace for the supplemental insurance program. This is a program that provides special insurance benefits to employees with the employees paying one-hundred percent of the premiums. After the group health insurance program was renewed with the local choice, all eyes turned to the supplemental insurance program that was handled by the Pierce Group. Specifications were created and released to any interested insurance company or agency. Four offers were received, with the top three supplemental insurance providers offering their services to our employees being interviewed. The individual companies being interviewed were, that gave us proposals was the Pierce Group, Mark III, NBC Benefits, and Anthem Blue Cross. Anthem Blue Cross was not asked for an interview as Anthem could not provide all of the services and insurance plans offered by the other three companies. Pierce Group, Mark III, and NBC Benefits are the three largest providers of supplemental insurance programs in Virginia and North Carolina. So we knew we were receiving the most attractive offers available in the insurance marketplace today. Interviews were held, and the committee interviewed the Pierce Group, Mark III, and NBC Benefits, allowed the candidates to introduce themselves and their programs, asked questions of each candidate, reviewed their services, and then voted via a secret vote on the services and benefit plans offered. All three candidates offered very good programs for our consideration. However, the highest-rated program based on the secret vote was the NBC Benefits Program out of Wilmington, North Carolina. Mr. Douglas Falk, who's President and CEO of NBC Benefits, presented an excellent program and services. NBC Benefits was the top vote-getter by all committee members. Some of the benefits NBC Benefits offers our employees included, but not limited to, no commission sales, meaning there's not going to be any pressure put on our employees when they go to sign up for any additional supplemental coverages, no COBRA fees to their programs, wellness programs, and wellness fairs. So the suggested award is, based on the insurance programs offered, the interviews, the services provided, and the secret voting, the committee is asking the school board to award the supplemental program NBC Benefits.
I move we approve the recommended company NBC Benefits for supplemental insurance.
Can I ask one question before we go through that? Because I know the question will be put to some of us. So everyone with coverage now will automatically convert over through our former provider?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yes, that's what I thought. I just want to be clear on that, yes. Okay. Motion on the floor to approve NBC Benefits as a new supplemental insurance provider. We've got a motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say no. Thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Dr. Buckloo, I believe you're going to give us a, am I right on that? Three million dollar school? No.
So we are bringing back to the Board under unfinished business our discussion that we began earlier in the year concerning our scenarios of paying down the remaining three million dollars of our high school obligation. As you recall, we used one million from our facilities line out of our school construction grant that was awarded from the state. In the top box, and I put a little check mark because that has been completed, so now we are down to the three million. I did gain permission through the school nutrition fund to utilize five hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the new kitchen equipment. So I'll be working with Mr. Mareska to contribute five hundred and fifty thousand of our, it's actually excess revenues in our school nutrition fund. So it's not going to be out of our Fund One, it is strictly from our school nutrition excess fund. And so we worked up with the state on that to make sure that was doable. It is approved within our excess cost spend down. So then that leaves us with two hun, or two million four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of our remaining commitment. So the obligation, of course, started at four million. One scenario that we presented in the first round of discussion was using a carryover of five hundred thousand. As you recall, we have anywhere from one million to one point eight million historically as carryover in our budget. So that is one scenario. Another scenario that we did discuss with Mr. Simpson, the county administrator, is utilizing the current interest on our bond. Our bond as of February twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-four was seven million eight hundred thousand dollars in interest. It has grown since then, but this is the latest number that I have to share. So if you were to take the two point four, or two million four hundred and fifty thousand out from the interest, that would leave five million three hundred and fifty from that balance in interest, but it would also settle the high school commitment. So that is another option out there that I've been asked just to make sure that we are showing the Board, and as it is an option based on the information from Mr. Simpson.
Yeah, Ms. Hicks.
Thank you for that. For the option number two, can it be a payment plan like the first scenario, so starting in twenty-five, twenty-six, five hundred thousand coming out for the next five years?
That would be up to the school board if you choose to do that. Mr. Simpson did caution before making any firm plan to let us get down the road a little bit, because we don't want to do one thing and have unintended consequences down the road. But it is an option that would be up to you all as a board of how you would do this.
Right, okay, thank you.
Yes.
Of course, the Board knows my preference, and I'll explain why. So the capital improvement, well, the carryover money has historically been used for capital improvement, and right now we're using a million for the security and six hundred thousand to maintain the teacher or the Halifax grow with us. So I think in the future, we'll probably need some money to maintain the security and the Halifax grow with us, so leaving some money in that fund is smart. We also will probably need to maintain teacher raises and health insurance at some point, not this year, but probably in the future. And we also have two schools still without gymnasiums, and they've had to use classrooms and mobile units, which is unsafe. And then we also have a capital improvement plan, buyer plan, that we have not put in our budget, and will need several million to complete that. So for those reasons, I think we should leave what's still in the carryover, which I think is about four point eight, seven million. So I move to take the remaining high school balance from option two. So I make a motion for scenario number two.
I second that motion.
Yes, Michelle, well, then, Mr. Lloyd.
The payments that we need to make on this are not due until the bills are due, correct? So they're not due until the high school is completed and we've used the existing fund.
That's correct.
And right now, this money is sitting in an account and gaining interest. So if we take it out of that account right now, we would lose interest on the money that's sitting there to put it in another account to sit there and not gain interest, right?
That is correct.
Yes, I think it's premature. I don't think we need to move any money out of either of these accounts until we're ready to pay it. It doesn't make sense to take it out of an interest-bearing account and put it into another account that doesn't need to be used yet. So I would be a no on that, but that would be why.
Mr. Lloyd.
Well, Michelle said a lot of what I was going to say. Unfortunately, I do think it's premature for the reasons that Ms. Shotwell indicated, but also until we have a better understanding of the full scope of the project, I would like to see us get the report from the Facilities Committee at the next meeting, especially before we start looking at disturbing pots of money that are very important and have been specifically designed along the way to allow for the full completion of the project, not a partial completion. So I would like to see us delay any vote on this now until a later date.
Okay, Ms. Runyon.
It's my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, that I don't think the motion was to move the money now to pay it. I think the motion was made in order for the Board to agree to go with scenario two when the time comes to pay the bill.
That's right, so delay it to maintain the interest.
Okay, got you. Thanks for clarifying that. Ms. Comer?
So my concern is if we go with option one, how do we know what's going to go on in the future? If the governor cuts budgets more, then where is that five hundred thousand dollars going to come from? Because what I don't want to see happen, and I would certainly hope that nobody else on this board would want to see it either, but my concern is that if we continue to move or borrow from Peter to PayPal, for example, like we have to borrow from this fund to pay for that, then we let our other schools go into disrepair, and then we eventually have to close a small school because we let it get in such bad shape that we don't have the money to take care of it anymore. So I would vote for scenario two, just that that money is dedicated to take care of it, so that we know the rest of the, the school is going to be done in April. The school is going to be built. It is what it is. Now we just need to make sure that we pay for it completely. And then if we have five hundred thousand dollars left over, there are plenty of things to do with these other schools to get them up and running to par, and our kids absolutely deserve to be in the best schools that they can be. So I think scenario number two is our best option for those reasons.
Yeah, I mean, all valid points. You know, I would have to say I don't see the value in depleting that amount so quickly. So I would certainly be a little bit more in favor of option one, but I mean, is that anything that we need to stamp? I mean, we're not spending the money tomorrow. It looks like the first payment would be, under scenario one, would be five hundred thousand in twenty-twenty-five, is that right?
At the end of the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
Okay, okay.
So that's not, not this coming school year, but the following.
Okay. Okay, yeah, all right. Michelle, well then, Mr. Lloyd.
Just one more thing, like Ms. Comer mentioned, we don't know what's going to happen this next school year. We're already planning to take out over a million dollars from the capital carryover fund. We don't know if we're going to have five hundred thousand. We're not going to know if we are under by a million dollars or over by a million. So it's the same thing with the high school. We don't know what the final bill is. The guaranteed maximum price, we, if it goes to the maximum price, that's what we would have to pay, but we could also come in under that. We've had over a million dollars in savings already. We've got our contingencies still in place. We haven't had any change orders yet. There's a lot still to go. We don't know what the final bill is going to be yet. So I think it's premature to make a decision on how we're going to pay this bill that we don't know that we have yet.
Mr. Lloyd.
Again, Ms. Shotwell and I are exactly alike in that. What I was going to say is, you know, along the way, we are recognizing savings throughout this high school project. I fully anticipate not only will we be at budget, but we will be below budget. Everything is showing signs that we're running there. Mr. Mareska in his report, he's indicated that there's a very good possibility we could come in below budget, which would potentially remedy this issue anyway, without crippling all future plans that are relying on these pots of money. So lastly, I would say, I would like to think for a decision of this magnitude that we would wait at least to have all, all Board members here, all eight Board members, and give them the opportunity to cast a vote on a three million dollar vote. And that's a fairly significant vote that we would deny them the option to, with the opportunity to cast a vote on.
Yeah, and again, we just paid a million dollars, so I don't know that, you know, again, we have to make this decision tonight. So I mean, I'm open to whatever you guys want to do. Ms. Hicks.
Yeah, so sorry to clarify my motion. Option number, scenario number two, but with the payment schedule granted, that it's okay with Mr. Simpson from number one, so we're not dipping in yet.
I got you.
It's just a tentative plan of where, how we can budget the money going forward. If we did use it, if we did go with scenario one, the carryover balance is about four point eight million right now, and if we take two point four, five million out of that, we're only left with two point four million in the carryover, and that's not much money at all. So we may be not able to fund security going forward. We may not be able to fund teacher salaries and the capital improvement plan and taking care of all the other maintenance at the schools. So we're at a great risk if we start dipping into the carryover funds.
Yeah, so I mean, if you guys want to vote.
I mean, she made a motion, so I think we have to do something with it.
Yeah.
I second, well, I think Holly seconded the motion, so I guess we probably should vote.
Yep. Probably have to do roll call vote. The motion, well, so Mr. Simpson did hesitate against us going with scenario two with a payment with installments, correct?
He, um...
And his reason behind that again, I'm sorry.
Let me get to the wording. There's no defined timeframe to utilize the accumulated interest and the remaining funds of the bond, but typically the funds are cleaned up at the end of the project. So he would suggest that we, you know, don't make, don't make our decision now where we may have to swap out, just like you said, with buckets.
Yeah.
And we wouldn't want to disturb the current interest growth.
Okay, so I'll rephrase that instead of the payment plan. So option, scenario number two, with a timeline suggested by Mr. Simpson as we accrue interest right now.
Okay, all right. So motion on the floor, adopting scenario number two, and we'll get with Mr. Simpson on a proper payment plan, is the motion on the floor. Is that correct?
Thank you. Thank you.
Roll call vote, please.
District one, Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
District two, Mr. Lloyd?
No.
District three, Ms. Hicks?
Yes.
District four, Mr. Mason?
No.
District six, Ms. Shotwell?
No.
District seven, Ms. Comer?
Yes.
Alright, so.
Should we make a motion? I mean, should we make a?
There's no decision that has to be made at this moment, I think.
No, and just to reiterate that Mr. Simpson said we need to have the whole picture before we start spending down any funds. Just.
Yes, ma'am, you can, Ms. Comer.
I have a question.
Sure.
And I know you probably can't answer it, but I'm just asking. Let's just say, you know, God forbid that we don't have money to pay this five hundred thousand dollars a year out of scenario one. Where is it going to come from?
That's why I need the guidance of the board to help determine the scenario. And we may even come up with a third scenario the more that we discuss, so.
What's an option as to where it could come from? Because that's not really an answer.
I would say, in my opinion, if it got to that point, we need to pay for it. If we have the bill and we need to do it and we don't have it in the capital carryover or we're seeing that our budget on a year-to-year basis, operating expenses is not covering it. I mean, we have the money there and, and I would support paying the bill when we need to pay it. But I, I just can't make that commitment now. So if we came, if it came down to it and we had to use the interest, I would absolutely support that if there's no other options.
Yeah, Mr. Lloyd.
And, and I would just encourage, and again, I'm only one, one vote, but I would encourage the, all board members, but especially new board members, that throughout this project, you know, it's been six-plus years that we've carefully studied and set aside pots of money. And we've always said that if we were patient, pass with clear. And so far, they have. I mean, it allowed us to, to build the high school and get to the point that we have. It's allowed us to set aside funding to complete the full project, what I mean, the athletic fields. I think you'll see that in future reports. I'm very confident in that based on the numbers that we've seen as part of the Facilities Committee. I can say that I've never seen a time on the board where we were not able to put aside some capital carry, I mean, funds are.
Yeah, that's, that's what we, that's how we got to scenario one. It's because we've looked at every year, there's efficiencies, every year, there's carryover. And it's usually anywhere between a million and a million eight. And where we've able, where we've been able to find those efficiencies. And it's not because we are not doing certain things at buildings. It's not that we're, it's not because we're not doing anything. It's like we're still doing things.
Other positions should not be.
Yeah, it's from unfilled positions and it's from other things. It's not that we're just completely not doing anything and we're just letting pots of money build up. I mean, we have this larger chunk. It's because school wasn't open and buses weren't moving. That's why it's at four and a half million right now. But a typical year, and really just the, you know, the, the last two years, we're at a million seven and a million and a million five. And I mean, and so even if you took, and so just projecting that going forward, you anticipate it being right about that same amount.
Okay.
And we've also built into our, into our budget, a, a little bit more money to do larger projects going on. We're trying to build in that painting cycle, paving cycle, some other things, so that we're not counting on only carryover money to do those things. Like that's been the, the habit in the past, but we're trying to build that money in the budget. So even what is left over is truly efficiency money.
Yes, and I, and I would just say that I, I would encourage you and maybe ask that you be patient and allow us to look at that fully before we make commitments. Because, I mean, in the time that I've been on the board, I think we've increased salaries fifteen to twenty percent, yet we still are able to manage these surpluses and, and build the capital funds. So I mean, I, I think a path will clear if we are just patient and, and we continue to look at the numbers over the next twelve months.
Yeah, okay. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Hicks?
Yeah, one more question. There was talk at one point of taking the money that we paid for the, the land for the new school. I think it was three hundred fifty thousand perhaps. Does that count towards our contribution?
From my understanding, our contribution has to be part of the one twenty-nine that we are at right now. And since that was not part of it, unless there's some misunderstanding, unfortunately, no, so.
I believe that was originally paid for out of the capital carryover fund, but I believe that's been put back, correct?
That's correct.
So we haven't paid for it, that, the money for that land came out of the bond interest.
Changed.
That'd be double dip.
Yep, yep.
Unfortunately.
Yep, yep, okay, alright. Well, I guess the good news is we don't need a decision tonight. And we'll keep this in unfinished business.
That's correct.
How about that?
Thank you, sounds good.
Thank you, Dr. Buckley.
Thank you.
Mr. Lewis, good evening, sir.
Good evening, Chair Mason, Dr. Husken, board members. I did have the pleasure of working with the Code of Conduct Committee. And I, I will announce who was a part of that committee. Ms. Shotwell, Ms. Runyon, Dr. Husken, Mr. Jeff Davis, Ms. Mangum, Ms. Witt, Mr. Russell, and Ms. Cinseny and myself. So not every conversation was easy as we worked through our code of conduct. And of course, everybody on the committee realizes the significance of taking care of business and, and making sure we're making the right decisions. It is not my intention to read to you forty-one pages here tonight, even though I did tease Dr. Husken earlier that, that I was going to do that. I don't intend to do that. I also would suggest, with permission of the board, that you guys take time to read the highlighted areas and, and share any information back with the two board members who are on the committee. And they can channel that information to myself if there's needs for further updates before we take a final vote in June. Certainly, I am prepared tonight to, to read to you each of the highlighted areas if you wish. But in the interest of time, if you could channel any concerns to our two representatives on the board, we can make any final updates necessary before we bring a final copy in June.
Okay. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Comer?
On page fourteen, it says the highlight portion, if, if assigned to a substance abuse intervention program, the school will pay for the students to go the first time. I was not aware that we had voted to do that.
So, so we have not, and, and that would be part of, of approving this code of conduct.
Okay, so do we need to discuss that today or discuss it when it comes for the next one? So if we agree not to do it, he can change it before we come back and.
Yeah, I, I, I think a discussion now would, would save another visit on this, so.
So.
If you don't mind, Mr. Lewis, read that highlighted portion for us.
If assigned to a substance abuse intervention program, Halifax County School Board will pay for the students first time. However, subsequent assignments to the program will be at the expense of the parents or legal guardian.
So.
Go ahead. No, 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 no. You should have the floor, Ms. Comer.
My question is this, if a student gets caught with any of these things outside, the state of Virginia does not pay to put them in substance abuse. So why are we paying for them to do that? I do not feel like it is our responsibility to pay for someone to go through one of these programs. It is a parent's job to parent their child. They should be the ones paying for it.
I would just say, in the discussion with it, you know, a- as, as a school system, we are here for the best success of the students possible. And so I think by offering this facilitation to families and the students, it, it will help them realize that we want them to succeed. We want them to do better. We, we want to be able to give them, you know, the option to get back on the right track. Does it necessarily mean that it's our responsibility? It is our responsibility as a school system to make sure that we let these kids know that we are here to support them. And I think it's just showing our support, okay, here, you know, we're going to help you. And then after that, you know, it falls to the parents. But I think as a school system, having this in place helps to provide that support, that extra support to the families and also the students to say, hey, you know, we're willing to help you get the help that you need because we are here to see you succeed. That was the, I think that was the conversation that we had when, when we met in the meeting. That was the, the thought process behind it.
Good point, Ms. Runyon. Uh, Mr. Lloyd, you had something?
I, I think if I'm reading Ms. Comer correctly, I would agree. I'm, I'm opposed to the school system paying for that. I'm strongly in favor for the school system coming up with an option and establishing an option for students to receive any type of substance abuse, um, intervention program that, that's needed. But I would strongly oppose the school system paying for that, that's, that program. So I would almost suggest, Mr. Chair, that in order, to, to save time, that we maybe do a straw poll to give Mr. Lewis guidance, so he would know how to move forward. No, we're not taking any votes, but just give a quick straw poll to, to guide him.
I would say we do an actual vote.
Yeah. I mean, I, I would make a motion to have it, that to, I would make a motion to approve for, for us to cover it for the first time.
Okay.
Second?
Second, okay. Alright, motion on the floor for us to cover the cost for the substance abuse program for the first time for any child on the floor. Yes, ma'am, Michelle will.
We see a lot of kids come through the disciplinary hearing meetings. A lot of these kids don't have support from their families. A lot of them are disadvantaged. They have, they're being raised by their grandparents with six kids in the house. The ones that are most at risk, I, I really don't think they could afford to do it and, and to help the students that need it. We have a problem with drugs in the school. We have a problem mostly with THC vapes. It's in every school. If we want to help these kids succeed, this is one way that we can do it and, and maybe curb them from going down a life of drugs. And I, I think it's worth it. If we get to a point in six months or a year and it's too expensive or it's too costly or we can revise it. But I, I think it's something that the kids need the support. And if they're not getting it home, we're the only ones that can provide it.
Yeah, well, good point, good point. Alright, restate the motion again to approve the highlighted portion that, that school system would pay for the first substance abuse program for the student. We had a second, I believe, so all in favor say aye. Aye, opposed say no. Need roll call? Okay, roll call. Yeah.
District one, Ms. Runyon?
Yes.
District two, Mr. Lloyd?
No.
District three, Ms. Hicks?
Yes.
District four, Mr. Mason?
Yes.
District six, Ms. Shotwell?
Yes.
District seven, Ms. Comer?
Yes.
One thing I.
Yes.
One thing I would highlight for the board, we did change some of the levels on the behavior incidents. So if you want to take a look at those and reach out to Ms. my, Mrs. Runyon or myself if you have any questions. But we did make some updates to those that you'd probably be most interested in.
Good, good suggestion. I think, as Mr. Lewis said, we need to review these and get with their members on that committee for any changes. And then you can bring it back to, to us for final, final vote. If it's, anybody else have any discussion or any issue with that? Okay, thank you, Mr. Lewis, appreciate it.
Budget update. Dr. Buckle.
I was hopeful that tonight we would bring forward a new budget for you, but we are not quite there yet. If we could go to the. Scroll down. The proposed budget. So you should have this in your information as well. So this is, this is the updated version that we put together on five nine of the budget. And you'll see there are some changes in there. And I'm not asking for a vote on this budget. This is for information so that you can see how things are changing as we are going along. Our state revenue will not stay at the number that you see in front of you. As of yesterday, the General Assembly and the governor agreed. And we have a signed budget, but we do not have a breakout by county. So we do have the state number. The good news is our budget is only going down by nine thousand six hundred and thirteen dollars on that state line. From what I am measuring, we will have a slight increase in local, but I can't, I cannot just guess that that number. So until I have it, I'm not ready to present the budget. There are some yellow lines that you see there with small Rs next to those. Those are restricted funds that we have various state grants in. So those are allowed to boot, uh, roll over to the next year for us to continue to spend out of. We have our stronger connections grant and that is only two hundred and twenty-eight thousand remaining in that grant. That's to help with threat assessment training and a partial of security payments for our, um, security provider. So we have some elementary schools listed and that will, of course, go pretty quickly next year as we start out the year. Virginia All-In, that, as everybody knows, is the new initiative, so we still have funds remaining. These are restricted only to the All-In programs in attendance, instruction related to the literacy and the math. And then, of course, the, we have designated some positions in there as well. So that money is going to continue to help us next year, but it has to be used the way that that grant was written. School construction funds, we are anticipating that we will have a carryover of about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to utilize in our facility remaining construction funds. That's just the grant piece. Our local revenue, again, that's going to change, but I can't guesstimate. I don't want to and I will not. So as soon as I have a definitive answer, then I will come before the board with a budget to be approved. The local revenue carryover is what we're asking the Board of Supervisors to approve to help with our security and our grow with, uh, stay with Halifax, grow with Halifax plan to keep us on a competitive edge. Then I'm going to go over in detail in just a few minutes for those that have not been through the detail sheet and for the public so that they can hear what, what it is we are trying to do for our employees. Then ESR, we still have the H-back out for bid. The VDOE has told us that we are permitted to do what they call a late liquidation. So we are anticipating that those two projects will be able to be met with that two million five hundred. We're hoping to come in lower than that for the two schools. But right now, this is just my placeholder number for that until we get our bids back. And we're very hopeful to get good numbers from our vendors. Federal funds, that is the same number that we roll for title funds each year. Food service is four million and then other funds or any kind of rebates, refunds, or fees that we charge within the division. Then our expenses, if you roll down, you will see that I have built in a facilities of seven hundred thousand dollars. So that's three hundred and fifty of our carryover for facilities plus what we reserve annually. So that, that is a nice project that we could possibly get done with those funds in our facilities specific. So that is a, a total of eighty million, eight hundred and twenty-four thousand, three hundred and one dollars. That will change slightly, not much, but it's enough that we have to wait before I come forward. The heading of this, you, we will have to publicly post this budget for seven days prior to a public hearing. So we will need to call a special meeting. Once I get the information, I will communicate with Dr. Husken and then she can communicate with the board of when we will be able to do that. And then I will promptly put that out in a public notice. The next piece that I'd like to go over is just a few more details on the Halifax Stay With Us, Grow With Us program. The next piece that I'd like to go over is just a few more details on the Halifax Stay With Us, Grow With Us, uh, program that we are, um, excitedly anticipating to be able to begin, uh, next school year. And I want to go over this so that we can get, um, clarity from the board. If we can go ahead and start planning with our new teachers to get them in the I Teach program. So I'm not going to read word for word, you have this in your packet, but just, uh, bear in mind that this is an executive directive from the Governor that every superintendent create a, uh, I'm sorry, competitive ret-retention program for their division. So this is the vision of Dr. Huskin, um, and the team as we've come together to reduce barriers, to increase numbers of candidates and to strengthen strategies to recruit and retain. Um, so our strategy is to implement the policy and practices that makes career and education more attractive and attainable. And we are doing that through several items that we will list below. The Halifax Years of Service, we have a tiered program beginning at five years and now we've extended it to the thirty-five year mark. So at the end of your fifth year, you will, you will receive a retention bonus of two thousand dollars. If you're at your thirty-fifth year, it's a five thousand dollar. Any employee in the first implementation year that is already at thirty-five, they will also get a five thousand dollar one time. So if you're at thirty-six, thirty-seven, forty, fifty, you will also get that one time, five thousand dollar longevity supplement. Professional development is another focus. Um, as we are bringing in new teachers, we want to make sure that we're providing them all the supports that they need. If they are needing to go back to classes, um, to, uh, renew licensers or just to get the provisional, we want to make sure we're giving tuition reimbursement, so we have built that in. I Teach is the next part of the program, so it is a fast track to getting teacher licenser. Um, if you, if we have current provisional or bachelor level teachers, then we will put them into the I Teach program, um, that are our current employees. We will have to keep that contingent on the annual budget. Um, but all new hired teachers, as part of their contract, they will be required if they don't currently have that license. They will have a lower beginning salary based on getting them into the program, going through the program. Um, and that will help them become a, a licensed teacher and it will help our division remain in compliance. So that is the plan, um, for new teachers, which I do want to get a vote on tonight, that we can go ahead and start lining up those new teachers, um, that, so that we can get this program in place. Uh, we're also doing licenser renewal on Halifax. Um, it's fifty dollars. It might not be much to us, but that can be a hurdle for some and we want to reduce those barriers. And the directive from the Governor is to reduce barriers, so that is one barrier that we're looking at. Um, another barrier is paying for their own fingerprinting as they come onboard. A lot of folks that we hire haven't had a paycheck yet. This is maybe their first opportunity, so let's make that smooth for them. Um, and then, of course, our professional development line in itself, we're going to keep, uh, at a sixty thousand dollar bucket so that Ms. Miller can plan and get those folks the development that they need to help mentor them into, um, excellent staff. So, uh, with all of that, that part of the new teacher, we would like a vote on from the board to support us to start preparing to get the teachers into the I Teach program as a new teacher.
Okay. All right.
Um, I would, I would just like to say thank you so much and thank you for Dr. Huskin's central office, everybody that worked on this. This, you know, to, to, there are so many questions that's being asked, what are we doing to get teachers here and keep teachers here? This is what we're doing.
Yes.
This is what we're doing. Um, this is a fantastic program. Um, I think there was a lot of work and effort put into it to keep our teachers here, um, to license our teachers who aren't licensed that want to stay with our school system, um, and I am jumping with joy over this program, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Runyon, and I'd say, Mr. Davis, Mr. Davis and I went on education focus group this afternoon and it, it's a nationwide issue with recruiting and/or keeping good teachers. And this is a huge step. Uh, I echo what Ms. Runyon said, uh, I, uh, thank you for your work and, uh, ready to vote if y'all want a motion on the floor, but Ms. Hicks?
Yeah, I had two questions, thanks. I, this is great, I think we need it. Um, it's not coming from our budget, it's gonna be, we're gonna ask the Board of Supervisors to use carryover money for this program.
Yes, we've, I don't like to use that word. We've requested part of that carryover funds to come back to us for this program, yes.
And it's a, do you anticipate six hundred thousand for the second year or will it be less than that?
No, sorry.
No, uh, you, you're, I mean, you know the numbers, but, I mean, the, the reason why it's about three hundred thousand dollars more is because we want to make sure that we, just because it's starting this year, we have so many people that are year thirty-five and beyond. I mean, to us, it's a, it's a thank you to them for staying with us for so long. But next year, there will be, we've kind of calculated it out, you're gonna have a very small number that they reached that milestone.
That's right.
And so the, the number just drastically drops.
And I think it's important that we are including those teachers.
Absolutely.
Just because this program is just now starting doesn't mean that our teachers that are at thirty-six and thirty-seven years old should not have,
Exactly.
You know, reap the benefits of this program. So I think that was something that was very thoughtful to, to, to make sure that we, you know, planned into, to it as well. So, I mean, I would make a motion to, uh, let's, I second that, let's move.
Can I ask a clarification?
Yes, ma'am.
It, are you asking for us to approve the whole Grow With Halifax, Stay With Halifax or just the I Teach piece?
Right now, we're working at the I Teach piece because we don't want to slow our roll. We want to get our good quality people while we can, um, sign on. So this will be, uh, a tool that we'll be using for our recruitment.
Yep.
We feel like the rest of it will be approved as part of the overall budget.
Yes.
And so, I mean, we feel like it's coming, but we feel like it really, we al-most can't until we get the, the carryover monies appropriated back to us. So you all could, could say yes, but you'd have to almost do a yes but. But you could approve this piece because it will be part of their contract.
Yes.
So just to clarify, I'd make a motion to approve, uh, us to move forward with the I Teach.
Thank you.
Second?
Okay. Any, you got one more from Michelle?
Um,
Or as many as you want, I'm sorry.
Well, no. One should do it, I hope, it might make it a, uh, concatenation, what's, what's the English term for it, run-on sentence? Um, no, I, I, I am concerned about using capital carryover for operating, ongoing yearly operating expenses. Uh, it's the same thing that we were discussing with paying for the, the, the bill for the high school before the bill is due. We don't know if we're gonna need the money from the capital carryover and I hate taking it out of savings and putting it into the spending account when we don't know if we need it and we're expecting we should be under budget. So I, I am not happy about that piece of it, but I absolutely support the I Teach and I, I like this plan as a whole. Um, I just thought I'd throw that caveat out there, so it's there.
Okay. Uh, motion is on the floor and we have a second to adopt the I Teach, um, program. And I thought we had a second.
Sorry, I didn't hear, I apologize.
Yep, uh, any other discussion on that? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed say no.
Wonderful, thank you. And I'm not done yet.
Stay as long as you like.
So the next piece, um, are our pay tables for next year. Um, I would like to, I, I sent these out early, hopefully you've had time to look through them. Uh, since I have set them out, um, we were hopeful that you'll be able to, um, if you have any questions, of course, address them. Um, but we're hoping that tonight you can go ahead and approve these pay tables contingent on the funding from state and local. Um, and with that, I've also provided a sample contract so you could see, we are writing that on every contract. It is all contingent on state and local and federal funding. Um, and, and it's in bold print so that everyone is aware that all things are subject to change based on the budget.
But we do want to get them out before people leave for the summer, that's the important part.
That is.
Is that last year we held contracts and there, it created a lot of unrest. And so we really would like to get contracts in people's hands before they leave for the summer. So if we could do that, have you all approve that, knowing that the Governor has signed the budget, so we know it's coming.
That's right.
And, and, and just to clarify, to make sure everybody, I'm sorry.
No.
Um, the, the, these pay tables includes the three percent increase.
Yes.
Um, but depending upon where they are in their step program.
Yes, so,
Everybody, everybody can understand that portion.
So what I've done in the pay table, did not put a flat three percent. I went into every step, calculated the difference between one step to two step and I took that calculation and added a percent to equal a total of three percent increase. So, um, they are getting a step plus a percent to equal three percent. And the three percent was passed in the budget, um, I didn't say that, so thank you. Um, that was passed as an approved piece of the budget, so we do know that is the past part.
Uh, Michelle, yes?
Do any of the steps, um, the existing steps have more than a three percent increase?
There are some throughout, there were built-in, um, longevity steps, I believe, um, between twenty-five and twenty-six in the teacher pay scale, there is one, there's, um, one in custodial, there's, uh, maintenance. Not all of them had that, but, um, and that was before my time, but if you need me to go back and look at, at something, please let me know. Um, but that, those I did not reduce, those are what they are.
And those are normal and pretty much everywhere there are, you know, when you're getting close to retirement, pretty much pay scales like that have a longevity step in them.
And I do want to point out, in these pay scales, we did extend the school psychologist, the behavioral specialist, um, and I believe it was the nursing, they have all gone to thirty years. We've also put in a supplement for National Board Certification.
So behavioral specialist in what you have is still listed at twenty-five years and so is the speech pathologist, cause I was thinking that.
I can certainly extend those. The intention was that the health, uh, that the health group all get the thirty, so if that did not come through, that will be corrected.
Okay.
I see.
Page thirty-one?
Yes, I see that.
Twenty-eight. Yeah, and I appreciate that very much, I think that is super important because these, these people have been out of school very young and they have ample opportunity to pull a full thirty-year contract with us. And I would hope we, you know, this will show them how serious we take what they do because there, there is, they are some of the most underrated employees that we have here for what they, they do and they do what they take home. And I definitely think they deserve a full thirty.
Yeah.
So thank you very much.
I will, I will now, we'll definitely update those sheets.
Thank you, I appreciate that very much.
Yes.
Mr. Lloyd?
Thank you.
Uh, Dr. Bucklou, do you mind giving us the starting teacher pay, um, based on the new scale here?
The new scale?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, if we could go to page, if we could go to page ten. So the starting scale at step zero is forty-seven thousand and twenty-four dollars. That is a three percent increase from last year's starting salary of forty-five thousand, six fifty-four.
Yeah, I, I ask you to read that just so we can make a point. Um, you know, I often hear that we're not doing anything to try to compensate or reward employees. I mean, I hear that all the time, what are we doing? We heard it earlier tonight, what are we doing? I mean, we're talking about implementing the Stay With Halifax, Grow With Halifax Plan. And I look back just a few years ago to the salary scale and the budget that we approved. This goes back to, um, FY seventeen, eighteen, starting salary at that point was thirty-eight thousand for a teacher. So, you know, again, we often hear that we're not doing anything. I mean, you're looking at a nearly ten thousand dollar increase in starting teacher pay. So I, I just thought that was important for us to point out as a board, when we, when we hear that criticism that it's, it's unfounded, it's completely untrue. I mean, we've worked hard to increase teacher pay, we specifically worked hard on years ten through twenty. You know, and I know we've put a, a real emphasis on those years over, um, over time, trying to make sure that retention was important to us. So, um, recruiting and retention has been emphasis of this board for the last, in my time on the board, I can say. So I want to thank you for the Stay With Halifax, Grow With Halifax Plan, but I also wanted to point out that we have made a real emphasis. Um, I, I guess my final point, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Um, my only reservation would be, I know we're, we're gonna have to meet again soon and I was going to mention this toward the end, but what we used to do, and I thought it was a very effective method to go through the budget preparation, is that we held at least monthly budget work sessions where we all came together and we were able to review the budget as we built the budget. So we had a really good understanding by the time you approved of changes that were being made. Now, that, that was like many things during COVID, it, it somewhat went away, but that was a process that we used in the past that was very, very helpful because we were to, we were able to get a better understanding, I think, of the overall budget and some of the line items and it didn't take away as much time in the other meeting. And I felt like we were probably a little bit more informed on the, I, I'll say I was more informed on my vote because we had the opportunity to, and no one wants more meetings, but that was very, very helpful. Uh, that we have plenty of meetings to go to. So I would just ask moving forward that maybe we give that some consideration. And if we know that there's going to be another meeting, I would like to have a little bit more time to look at the pay scales in depth before I cast a vote on it because I do have some concerns, um, on the upper end of our scale and, um, I, I'll save those for, for a later meeting.
Got you.
Can we,
Yes.
Can we schedule a, a budget work session for sometime in the next month?
I just think it's important that we get these, these contracts out though, guys, I mean, we're,
They're going home in two weeks.
Yeah, I mean, we're going home at the end of the month. Yeah, I mean, I, I feel like we have to supply them with something and then waiting another month, uh, to me just doesn't seem right.
Yes, Ms. Lloyd?
And, and I would agree, I wouldn't advocate for waiting a month, but I would say, you know, if we could have a work session where we could look at these numbers a little bit more in depth and then hopefully by then you'll have a better understanding of the budget. So we're not offering a person a contract without a full understanding of what we can commit to. You know, we're not putting something in a talix saying, this may or may not remain true, it, it may be unchanged. I, I just think that's, that's premature to put that in there even with that caveat of, hey, we're, we're hoping this is the amount of money that we're receiving. We don't definitively know that it's the money that we're receiving.
So I know this, I know that I know the state, I know that number. It's just what is, my hesitation is that local piece.
Right.
Which is always varied over the years and, and, and we definitely have, um, a large new population, a, a, a large new percentage of new members on the Board of Supervisors. So I don't think we even have a historical reference as far as what they may want to do with the local commitment. So anyway, that, again, I'm one vote, that's just my thought. I would rather see a budget work session where we can make a final vote on this.
I, I don't totally disagree with that, but unfortunately, you know, I, I'm, I'm, I'm just not okay. I mean, I feel like we need to, we need to vote on these contracts. So I would make a motion to, um, approve sending out the contracts, uh, with the verbiage, uh, you know, pending the budget approvals, um, you know, and that would be my motion.
Motion on the floor, Sarah Second?
I second that.
Any other discussion on this before we have a vote?
Would it be possible to schedule a budget work session for next week?
Yeah, and I was gonna say, it's certainly a good idea, uh, to have a budget work session, but I would echo what Ms. Runyon said is, unfortunately.
Move it, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with having a budget work session. I think we need to do something with the contracts, that's, that's the only. I think we need to do something with the contracts. That's that's the only reason I'm making the motion to to at least do that part.
I I honestly, I haven't had a lot of time to look at this. I'm not sure when it was posted. But I didn't see it before the meeting, so I apologize if that was my mistake. Um, I I would like some time to to see the updates for the couple of pay scales. And I I think we do need to look at some of the stuff on the higher ends. Um, we are one and a half million short on the budget already by our plan. Um, I I think we need to spend a little time. I agree, we need to get it out soon. Um, I I would agree to approving the teacher pay scales and hold off on the rest so that we can take a look at it in a little more detail, but um, I I would.
Is is that an option to?
We have many more, many more groups that are ten-month employees than just teachers. Um, so our goal was ten-month employees to get those in their hands before they leave for the summer, which would be parapros, eight um, cafeteria, bus drivers.
So can I amend the motion to approve to at least send these annual contracts out to all ten-month employees?
Ten-month and um, teacher, well, yeah.
They're ten.
All all ten-month employees at least to get these in their hands. Did you get that? Do you need me to say anything? I make a motion to um, approve sending out the annual uh, contracts to all ten-month employees with the verbiage pending the budget approvals.
Wait, wait, wait one second. Is that gonna do, what does that do to the pay table?
So in order to send out the contracts, I would have to have those pay tables approved because that's what we're generating the contracts off of. So I just need clarification on that piece.
So you can't send out the pay, you can't send out a contract without an approved pay table.
Yeah.
So we approve the pay tables for the ten-month employees.
All the the pay tables for all ten-month employees.
You can't, you can't break up the, the pay tables are set, so.
Why couldn't we? We we can, we can manually change, or we can adjust one pay scale at a time, so why? I'm not sure I understand why we couldn't do.
I don't know, I don't know why. I mean, I've seen the look on her face, so.
Well, I mean, it's all up to the will of what you all need me to do. Um, I can just take out pages and we'll put up the ten-month. Because traditionally, what we do is we post the pay tables for the employees. So when they receive their contract, they have something to look at. So I would just have to strike the pages that weren't ten-month.
So we have a motion in a second?
Yes, Mr. Lloyd.
Dr. Buckle, may I ask a question? So I I'm actually in favor of that motion, but I see the look on your face, which leads me to believe that that may not be your, your preference.
Probably just my twelfth hour, so just ignore the face.
So I guess my question to you, I want to do if, is it easier for you if we delay this until next week and have the conversation, or is it delete easier if we adopt the ten-month? What what is easiest for you as?
Well, it's between me and HR, um, getting these out into their hands. Our goal was to have them in their hands next week so they actually have time to call us if they have questions, not hand them out on the last day of school, so um.
When do they have to return them?
We were going, Mr. Neal, do you have the date in your notes?
No, not the actual date, but you list seven days after the date.
Seven days after they're handed the contract.
So if we met next week, presumably you would still have the opportunity to get those out by the end of the school year, correct?
Possibly. It's it's quite a process to.
It's a process of time.
I'm just gonna go ahead and and amend the. I'm just gonna go ahead and and amend my motion again. I'm going back to my original. Um, I make a motion to approve um, sending out the annual contracts, the 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 pay tables and as well as the making, making sure that the annual contracts have the verbiage um, in reference to pending the budget approval.
Okay, all right, so that was the original motion. Did we have a second for that? Or we'll second it again if if we didn't? Okay, so Ms. Hicks, second that. Okay, any other discussion on this? All right, roll call vote.
Sorry.
Mr. One, Mr. Oneon?
Yes.
Mr. Two, Mr. Lloyd?
No.
Mr. Three, Ms. Hicks?
Yes.
Mr. Four, Mr. May?
Yes.
Mr. Six, Ms. Shaw?
No.
Mr. Seven, Ms. Helen?
No.
Three, three, Mr. Ray?
All right.
All right, so let's schedule a budget work session ASAP.
Okay, may I ask, may I ask a question for Dr. Buckle? When do we, nothing's gonna change until she gets a count tool. Do we have any idea when we might get a count tool?
There's been no word from the VDOE on that, so.
So there's no reason to schedule a a work session? I mean, we will just be looking at the exact same numbers until she gets a count tool from.
Yep.
I mean, unless you all want to just meet and look at the pay tables together. I mean, there's really.
That's, otherwise I won't.
Changes to anything until she gets a count tool from the D O E.
And we're mandated to give three percent.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, you know, you have to do the three percent to every, to every, every table that's existing. That's what she's done. She's gone into last year's pay table and done a three percent on every table, so.
We can't un, really undo anything that's up here.
Can I, can I ask a question on that? The three percent is for all employees or for SOQ-funded?
You had to do it for, well, you didn't have to, but.
Okay, so legally, it's three percent for the SOQ-funded. But historically, we've given it to everyone, but it's not legally required.
Right, but I mean, you can't really, I mean, you're the SOQ English teacher and you're the.
Correct.
You're the non-S, I mean, you, I don't know how you split. I don't know how any school division has ever not done it for every employee. I've never heard of one that did.
Yeah, it gets into fractions of a teacher.
Yeah, you, yeah, you split hairs on your partial, like, like say a principal. We fund a principal partially from federal funds, partially from local funds, and partially from state funds. So I mean, I don't know how you would give up. I I don't even know how you would calculate not doing it for all employees. I've never even heard anybody doing it.
No.
Maybe we can tentatively schedule a meeting, a discussion for next week, and if you need to push it, you can push it.
When do you think you'll hear back? What is your?
They don't give us any inclination, none. I wish I had an answer. I asked other finance directors. There's no, no murmuring yet. I mean, the numbers just came out yesterday at like ten o'clock.
And they're all sitting out contracts, like other.
And yes, other counties are, we did a survey on that. Other counties are sending their contracts and approving their pay tables based on the disclaimer. So in region eight, all of them are.
Yeah, so I I would recommend we have a work session next week to at least review the pay scales and answer any questions that we currently have on the budget. And if we can, if we have to have another one, we can do that. Maybe we can cover it all, all of our questions in the work session, and then we just have the public hearing. Um, but contracts need to go out, so if we can do that next week, that would help.
It will take you several days to accumulate all the pay tables, put it in contracts, and send them out.
Correct. They, they haven't even printed.
Unprinted, so, and plus the seven days. So we're already at.
Well, after the last day of school.
Yeah, we're already after the last day of school. Even if we met Monday, you wouldn't get them sent out till Wednesday or Thursday, and then school's done. So I don't understand the timeframe because we need to get them out now.
I certainly do not disagree.
Can I?
I mean, I think if there's, I think maybe I'm a little bit, I I I'm misunderstanding. Um, is there a certain issue that that the board has with the higher pay tables that we can discuss now to clarify? Is that something that we can do? I know that you guys said that there was the higher pay scales that you guys were concerned about. Is that, are those, can you bring those questions up now to get clarity?
Yep.
Well, I mean, one, I was looking for the opportunity to look at the information in a little bit more detail. I mean, we we're looking at, you know, we we argued earlier over um, smaller amounts of money. And then we're looking at significant money and significant commitments, not just for this year, but forever moving forward once we stamp this. I would just like to have the opportunity to look at this and make sure that we're, you know, that that we're meeting our goals. I mean, I I don't think that we're planning to deny anyone a contract. And I think anyone who can look at these scales, again, they can see that we're we're committed to um, paying staff well. Just again, go back to the upper, and step twenty-five in two thousand eighteen was forty-five thousand. Step one nails forty-seven thousand. I mean, so you can see that we have a commitment here. And I think that we're, as evidenced by our all willingness to do the ten-month earlier, that we're all committed to the teachers' salaries. I mean, I don't think there's any question about that. So um, I I understand everyone wants the contract in hand, but I think we just have an obligation to do a thorough review before we approve that. And to me, this wouldn't constitute a thorough review. To not, I mean, I I don't mind making a motion. I can make a motion that we meet next week to review pay scales.
I was thinking we could also, the other option is going back and doing the amended version of what Mrs. Runyon had given. And I I do understand it's more work, and I apologize. Um, I would, I would think it's less than manually adjusting each step for three percent. And and I certainly wouldn't recommend that we pay an SOQ-funded teacher and give him three percent. And the SOQ-funded, non, non-SOQ-funded teacher not give it to him, that is not. But I I do want some time to take a look at at administration pay scales. Three percent of of a hundred thousand is a lot different than three percent of forty-five thousand. Um, and we need to be fair to to people on the lower end of the pay scales and make sure that they are compensated fairly.
I'll second that.
So.
Does that work?
Yeah, I mean, just one question though. Is that gonna tie you up to the point where if we meet next week and agree on it all, are you then gonna be in a position where you're even further behind getting those contracts out?
Yes, but I mean.
I I just don't see how that solves anything.
It's a compromise.
And that's the only reason I was asking Dr. Buckle that question earlier. Was it easier for her? I'm certainly, I'm willing to do a meeting next week or approve the ten-month, whatever is easiest for her position. I just don't want to full, approve the full pay scales without the opportunity to review them in more detail. Again, I'm one vote, so.
Is there any way that the board can agree to meet this week instead of next week? Thursday or Friday? I mean, is that, how much time, how much time do we, do we need to review it? I mean, can we do it, can we do it Thursday or Friday?
I'm only one member, but I'm leaving, going out of town. I was supposed to leave yesterday. But when we moved the meeting to Wednesday, I changed my schedule. I'm leaving tomorrow morning, going out of town.
That won't work. We have to give the public a three-day notice for all the meetings.
Yep, yep, so.
We could do some Monday?
First thing Monday?
Yes, I'll be back Monday. Monday evening, or Tuesday would be even better, but I could do Monday.
Our time is up there since if we're doing this, let's get it done Monday, yes.
We have the tour at four P M. on Tuesday.
Then I'm supposed to move to Shocky Monday night.
Can we do it right after?
We do it Monday.
Can we do it Tuesday then?
I'm supposed to do it Tuesday, Monday night.
President Shocky's. Tuesday's gonna be the earliest, Monday's the third day, so we can't do it Monday.
Can we do it right after?
We have that tour, so we can come back right after we tour this one.
I can't be here Tuesday, but you guys can be. Tuesday, Thursday, second day.
I think, I guess I'll just cancel with the President of Shocky and do this on Saturday.
I can't, I guess I can do it Monday.
No, it's Tuesday.
Three business days. I'll cancel, and this is my, we gotta get contracts.
There's a motion on the floor.
I mean, that is the third day, so that technically that's okay. If we advertise it tomorrow morning, Thursday, Friday, Monday is the third day.
So we can meet on the third day?
On the third day.
Whatever we need to do to move forward, guys, we're we're stuck.
Oh, okay.
What? No, I mean, that is the third day, so.
Are you thinking we cannot meet on that third day?
That would technically be the fourth, I mean, the next day would be the fourth day. You don't have to wait three full days and then you meet on the next day. You can meet.
We can meet on the third.
We can meet on the third day. This is, come take my work that way. It'd be okay. We'll meet on the third day. This this needs, it's gonna be okay. Y'all can meet.
What time works for everybody? Monday?
You guys want to meet first thing in the morning?
That, I got to meet the three day.
No.
We need to give them that full, we need to give them that day. That, so technically, if you want to have that third day be the business day, then you can meet that evening. So let's, I think that's fair.
Six work on Monday?
I don't know.
Okay, that is a great answer, Ms. Hicks. Thank you. Ms. Runyon?
I I don't know. I mean, I've, that's a lot of days to take off work the past three weeks. So I'm, you know, there's, there's a lot of members who can't take off, and you know, I can't, I can't.
I got you.
I don't know.
Is Tuesday better or?
No, just go ahead and, I mean, I I.
Well, Tuesday evening is the pace graduation, so it can't be Tuesday evening.
Got you.
I'd say we go ahead and schedule it for Monday and.
All right, let's do it six o'clock Monday? Okay. Okay, was that all Dr. Buckle?
All on that? All on that item.
All of that, okay, yeah, all right, go ahead.
There was, there was a motion on the floor.
Refresh my memory. What what was that one?
Yeah.
It was. Do you want to withdraw that with, since we have a meeting scheduled, or?
If that is your preference.
It 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 is certainly not, no, it's.
No, I mean, if it, that's her preference.
No, I I think it's up to, up to the board, so I mean.
I would say we approve it and and let that stuff get done, but I, I mean, that's why I made the motion, but.
Okay, all right. Was there a second to that? Most of all.
I'm gonna withdraw my second based on Dr. Buckle's.
Face.
Yes, response.
Yes.
Yeah, just based on her response.
It's just that all our employees are in one bulk session, and for me to start picking who's ten and who's not. I mean, it's, I'll do whatever the will of the board is, but that is a little more difficult.
We've got a meeting scheduled, so let's uh, let's let's move forward with that and let's.
Okay.
Yes, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, and now we're clean and clear there, and now next item.
New business. Um, this one's hopefully easy. Every year, we have a year-end closeout meeting that we look at all remaining bills. And we have approval of those bills at the closeout meeting and any other items that may came up related to the year-end budget out. Um, so I am asking the board to approve June twenty-sixth, which is in line with last year, um, for the year-end closeout meeting date.
I will make a motion that we schedule the meeting as requested by Dr. Buckle for June twenty-sixth.
Second.
Can I get a second? Okay, any discussion on that?
What was that time again?
Six thirty, regular, regular time, just uh, on the twenty-sixth. And here at the complex at Mary Bethany. Uh, any discussion, other discussion on that?
Do we ever get an update from the Board of Supervisors about meeting space?
They were going to get back with us. All right, um, no other discussion on this meeting. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, say no?
Thank you.
Dr. Buckle, do you have anything else? I'm kidding.
Soon.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, Monday night, thank you.
She's coming up in Paul's meeting.
Oh, is she? Oh, yeah, you will be up in a moment, okay? I should not have said that, sorry. All right. I should not have said that, sorry, alright. So, under new business, student representative scholarship. And we were gonna have a discussion on that, is it kind of?
On the, you all had brought up, and actually, this kind of involves Dr. Buckle because you all adopted the stipend for the school board representative and then there was some conversation. Question was asked whether we offered a scholarship for our school board representative, and to my knowledge, there isn't one that exists, and then there was some conversation about changing that, um, plan and it needs to be brought up for conversation about whether you, how you wanna proceed, but then that would involve some procedural things about, because you've already kind of adopted this policy going forward about what that, what that looks like, so, um.
So I would have just one question.
Yes, ma'am.
If we choose to adopt to, I guess, I guess we wouldn't even be amending that policy, we would just, we'd be redoing the whole thing, cause I know we were doing the stipend before and now we're bringing up the scholarship thing. Would that start for next school year or would our school board representative from this year be able to receive that scholarship?
I, I think we're kinda too late at, at this point, because, I mean, it's really scholarship, I mean, again, it could be at the will of the board, you guys would have to decide, because now, remember, in the fall, we're gonna bring on a junior representative.
Right.
So, you're gonna, at some, for a period of time, you will have two. Now, I will say this, we just interviewed candidates and we have now chosen the one for next fall under the auspice that there would be a stipend. So I, I feel like to now go back and say, oh, wait, oops, now we've changed that, so you kinda need to consider that, you all do what you want, you know, do what you want and have this conversation, but do you then start with the junior that you're gonna bring on next fall to change to a scholarship? Do you do a yes and, I mean, you can, you can do however you, however you want to do, but just consider that as part of your conversation that Chairman Mason and I just interviewed and, and bringing on your senior representative starting in August, under the understanding that they would be in, under the stipend. So just know that you wanna be upfront and transparent with whomever you're sitting down with to know that this is what they, their understanding of what you're doing, so just know that.
Yeah, Michelle.
We just approved this a month or two ago, have, have we been able to pay our current student rep this year?
Ms. Buckle, Water, Dr. Buckle, Water, have we, did we institute it now or do we do it going forward under the, that it was gonna be for next year, I, I don't.
My understanding was it was going to be moving forward as we had the, the junior and the senior.
Okay.
So we did not.
So, I mean, my opinion, we don't need both, I, I think that's, it would be nice for high school students, I'm sure, but I think it's in the right, moving the right direction, giving a stipend for gas money and all of that. I would be okay with a scholarship for this year if we could, giving her a back pay for the meetings that she has attended, give her a scholarship, something in, for that payment. She has been an excellent student rep and we, even when she's not here, she's provided the, the report, I would be okay with a one-time scholarship, but I wouldn't recommend we do both going forward, if that's feasible from up.
I would say since, you know, since we, it would be my suggestion, since we've already interviewed for, for next year, just go ahead and do the stipend, maybe table it, let's discuss it before we interview next year if we decide we want to take out the stipend and then change it to a scholarship, do that at that time, but I do agree that we should do something, you know, a little, a little something for, for our representative this year.
Can I make a motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Lloyd.
I'd like to make a motion that we offer a scholarship to Ms. Peyton Murray for the work that she has done and I would base it on the rate of the stipend times the number of meetings that she was physically able to attend. And, and moving forward, at, we will pay the stipend this year with the understanding that we'll revisit it a year from now before we interview any candidates to see if we want to move, proceed with a stipend or a scholarship.
Now, remember, we are, we are interviewing, we'll need to bring it up in the fall because we are gonna be interviewing a junior candidate in the fall, so.
Yep.
At whatever time the superintendent feels necessary to put it on the agenda.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Second.
Did you get all of that?
That may be, that may be the longest motion I ever heard, I'm glad you got it and I don't have to repeat it, I, I did understand it.
Of all encompassment.
Any other discussion on this, so approving a scholarship for Ms. Murray, moving forward with the stipend is a short version of that, I cover the hybrid notes, okay. All in favor, say aye, aye, opposed, no? Wonderful. And as promised, Dr. Buckle is coming back.
So as a result of our teacher advisory committee and public comment on more than one occasion, the terminal leave for sick, sick leave pay has come to surface. If you could scroll down to section F, this is policy GCBF sick leave, and we are focusing on section F to try to update, to make it a little more in line with what other divisions are doing and to make it more up to date. Currently, for employees under VRS Plan One and Two, and that's any employee that was hired before January first of two thousand fourteen, when they retired, they were paid out twenty-five dollars a day for no more than five thousand dollars for their sick leave, which they had saved for not missing work. We wanna revisit that, we wanna encourage folks to save time and show up to work, so as part of that, we would like to introduce, introduce a rate of sixty dollars per day with a cap of ten thousand dollars, whichever is less. I do wanna note that hybrid employees, because of their unique benefits under VRS, VRS stipulates that they are unable to make more than fifteen hundred dollars in a hybrid plan. So that's any employee that was hired after two thousand and fourteen in the VRS plan. So that, that is the, the quick and simple explanation of what we are trying to update, we've heard the teachers and we wanna let them know that we are listening.
Just one thing.
Yes.
Your cap on there says five thousand, just to clarify, you're gonna change that to ten, right?
Yes, sorry. My version says ten. Not sure why it's not there, but I can get that updated.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, Michelle.
Two quick questions, can you give us an overview of how you got to the sixty dollars and when would this become effective?
We would like to make it effective for our current retirees before they leave this year. We did review around other counties, we looked and took an average of what others are doing and sixty was a nice, comfortable spot. We don't want our current teachers to feel slighted if you are to approve this, so we would like to get it effective immediately, sorry. And, did you have a second question, I'm apologize.
You covered both of them, but now I have a third, do you have an estimate about what the total cost would be for this year?
Yes, in general, we have anywhere from five to seven retirees that get a payout, under the twenty-five dollar, it's with vacation and sick leave, we're at forty thousand dollars for seven people. But part of that is individuals that have vacation leave and that's on a per diem, so it's a little bit less just for sick. I need, I didn't, I didn't bring that number, but I can give it to you.
The other piece to this is it's gonna encourage our people to save their days, we, it costs us more on the substitute side. Because our people burn their days and we don't have our real teachers in front of our children, so if you know you're, you can get paid out up to ten thousand dollars when you retire, you're more likely to stay at work, so.
Yeah, and accumulate your days.
On the other side of that, you know, twenty-five dollars a day for a veteran teacher who has showed up every day to be in her classroom to make sure that her students are being taught and that they are learning and that they are getting the education that they deserve, I mean, twenty-five dollars a day is almost laughable and I think our teachers deserve much more than that, yeah.
I make a motion to approve what Dr. Buckle was asking, sixty dollars a day with a cap of ten grand, whichever is less, effective immediately.
I'll second that.
Second, Mr. Lloyd, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye, aye, opposed, say no?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir.
We've got a fuel bid for us.
Uh, the school divisions in Region Eight has formed a consortium for fuel bidding process for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, and this entails the LP gasoline, heating, heating fuel and diesel. We were able to participate in a preliminary meeting on May the ninth in Cumberland County, just to garner some additional information, this is one measure that we're using as far as cost efficiency. Of the twelve school divisions in Region Eight, eight are participating now and we would like to be the ninth division. If the permission is granted, each division will share the bid process in their respective locality, there's, there will be a mandatory pre-bid meeting on May the twenty-first and then we will open the bids on June the fifth in, in Prince Edward County. The wording will state that we can reject any or, or all parts of the bid, but this is just an opportunity for us to lock in the fuel costs at a lower rate, which will be for the entire school division. And the more school divisions that are participating, the lower that rate will go down, so I am asking request for authorization to proceed with this process.
I make a motion to allow Mr. Davis to proceed with the fuel bid process.
Great idea, any other discussion on this? All in favor, say aye, aye, opposed, say no?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. I rely on Michelle for this.
Yes, pursuant to section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven of the Code of Virginia, a move that the board convene a closed meeting for the purpose of considering the following specific matters. Personnel, the appointment, resignation and salaries of specific division employees as authorized by section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven dot A one of the Code of Virginia. Disciplining specific students of the school division as authorized by section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven A two of the Code of Virginia. Protection of the privacy of individuals and personnel matters not related to public business as authorized by section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven dot A four of the Code of Virginia. Property, the possible acquisition or disposition of school property by the school board as authorized by section two point two dash thirty-seven eleven dot A three of the Code of Virginia. Do we have all of this on our closed, she usually.
No, I don't think so.
She usually limit it to what we need to approve.
I think it's just personnel and discipline.
Okay. So strike the property and it is only the personnel and discipline.
Second, any discussion? All in favor of going to close session, say aye, aye, opposed, say no? Court adjourned?